Will everyone please stand for please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the British Empire, where it stands one nation under you, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, we'll move to approval of minutes. Are there any changes to December 16th, 2021? Minutes.
I have a couple of changes.
Yes, exactly.
On page one, I'm pretty sure we met at 6:00 PM and not 9:30 AM on November 16th. Minor thing on page 800, item number five, election, motion, motion by Miss Tab to approve the extension of non-civil service employee vacation leave balance cap and roll from, should be rolled over, okay, from December 31st. That's it.
Okay. Those changes, are there any objections to approval of minutes? Hearing none, those are passed. Are there any changes to January 20th, 2022 rate of meeting? All right, hearing none, is there any objection? Hearing none, those are passed. Are there any changes for the January 25th, 2022 special session? Hearing none, are there any objections? If not, those are passed. Are there any changes to January 26th, 2022 special session? Hearing none, are there any objections? Those are passed. For January 27th, 22, 2022 war meeting, there are no objections, those are passed. Moving to requisitions for February 3rd, 2022, an amount of $44,112.20. Are there any objections? Hearing none, those are passed. For approval of accounts payable for January 27th, 2022, an amount of $320,045.10. There are no objections, those are passed. For accounts payable for February 3rd, 2022, an amount of $201,168.81. There are no objections, those are passed. For manual checks for January 28th, 2022, an amount of $7,834. There are no objections, that's passed. Manual check for February 4th, 2022, an amount of $2,681.41. There are no objections, those are passed. For payroll on January 20th, 2022, an amount of $250,000, $250,451.81. There are no objections, those are passed. For payroll for February 3rd, 2022, an amount of $259,244.99. There are no objections, those are passed. Are there any announcements or changes to the?
I have the announcements.
I'm about to move to public comment. If you're online, raise your hand. And please remember to keep your public comments to three minutes. And the first name on the list here in person is David Tab.
David Tab, Jefferson County lifelong resident. First, I need to thank the county commission for finally putting the public comment back where it belongs. How can you make decisions on something that's only agenda if you don't allow the public to come in and speak to it before you make a decision on it? It's pretty simple. There's also rules that the previous county commission set forth that you're always supposed to do it this way. So now that you're back, thank you. And so does the public. I'm concerned about the agenda packet, that there seems to be some discrepancies. One of them is this South Central Planning and Development Commission for $13,500. It doesn't give you any information why you need it, whether any contracts were put out for it. And here you're going, you're supposed to be approving it, but yet in here it says for July 1 of 2022 to June 30 of 2023. So why are you six months in advance either approving or paying for something that's not going to come out? In that same packet is a firebox, monitoring and a firebox for $24,508. One is a one-year contract and the other one's a three-year contract. Again, not enough information for want someone to come in, make a comment of how this stuff is getting done. Manual checks, again, not enough information of where the money's coming from, how it's getting paid when we're supposed to have a budget. If you have extra money sitting around, tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars, sitting around, then why weren't they put into the budget? I thought that's what the budget plan was about. Item three, animal control. They're wanting to take capital outlay money for $24,699 to purchase a vehicle. Apparently, someone wasn't careful, don't know whose fault it was, but now you have a wrecked vehicle and they claim they don't have an extra. You got one coming, it's already been approved. So are you going to outlay, you know, another $30,000? Doesn't say if it's a new vehicle or used vehicle or what? Again, not enough information. Public hearing, item four, for the solar verbiage. Y'all have an answer? Here's each of them.
Next on the list is Jennifer Kraus.
Good morning. I know a few of you here. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Jennifer Kraus. I'm running for the state on this commission from Shepherdstown, running as a Republican. First, I want to thank you for moving public comment to the beginning of the meeting rather than later, better than later. I know that's important to me, that's important to a lot of the residents in this county. Also, I'm wondering what can you do to lift the space for active restrictions in this meeting so that more of the residents of this county can attend? I think that's very important to a lot of people. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in person I would like to make comment? Just, does anyone raise their hands?
Yes, we have one individual, and that is Ms. Christine Marshall. She's self-managed. Ms. Marshall?
Hi. My statement, can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, my statement is in regard to the Green Hill rezoning and has to do with the current ability of the county's infrastructure to support the proposed density of the development. My first point would be if the houses are in low-density residential and are three units per acre and on well-inseptic, there is a risk of groundwater contamination and the possibility of a negative impact to those consuming well water. Another aspect would be, has a community, has the county conducted a study to determine the amount of groundwater available? The second point would be if the development proceeds with public water and sewer, does the receiving utility have the capacity? Charleston Utility doesn't propose increase in capacity until 2030. The wastewater treatment plant was built in the 1960s. Tuscaloosa has been out of service for, out of full service for well over a year. In 2018 and 2019, both Tuscaloosa and Charleston were in, they, they were at 90% capacity. And some of that had to do with the wet weather. But part of their agreement with the West Virginia DDP at that time was the ability for Charleston to divert flows to Tuscaloosa, but now Tuscaloosa is down. I would recommend keeping the land in rural zone until the utility increases capacity. The other thing would be roads. Is there a plan to widen flowing springs to accommodate the new traffic? And does the planning commission incorporate these needs when determining development setbacks? That is for road widening. Are the houses set up on the road so that when road widening does need to occur, you know, it can do so without negatively impacting the homeowner? So my statements weren't for or against whether this rezoning is appropriate, it's just has to do with the timing. Thank you.
Thank you. This is the last call for public comment. Want to raise your hand online or if anyone in the room would like to make comment?
Don't have any.
With that, I'll close public comment and move to item number one, Jackie Shaglin, about changing payroll date from Thursday to Friday.
Good morning. My payroll clerks approached me with changing the payroll dates from Thursday to Friday. I backed them 100%. I told them that they would have to come before you all and get your approval. So Betsy Nelson is one of my payroll deputies, and she will plead her case before you, and hopefully you'll see her point of view.
Good morning. I have to be aware, payday is currently every other Thursday, and I believe this goes back to the old practice of paying employees on Thursday to have that paper check cashed by Friday so they can do entertaining, they can do shopping and things like that on the weekend. But we've since moved to a more modern way of paying people electronically. And we're requesting that we move payday from both day to Friday. This would allow the payroll department, which consists of two people, to process payroll on an extra day. Currently, our safety departments, they come in on Sundays or early Monday mornings to process payroll, and that does result a little bit over time. And when we have a government holiday, Sheri and I have to come in and work on those Monday holidays to get payroll out, to make the 2 o'clock deadline on Tuesday. We don't receive, sometimes we don't receive pay, the timesheets in from some departments until later on Monday, especially if we've had previous holidays, the previous pay periods. So it does take a little bit of time to actually go through and read everything. The, my anticipated employee impact, if it would be one day, the pay periods would remain the same. They do expect to be paid on Thursday. So I did propose, and the agenda item, to have that going to affect in March, I'd like to change that request and move it out to July 1 to make that, to coincide that with the fiscal year. That would allow the employees 10 pay periods between now and then to get accustomed to the new, the change in the payday. I did do some research with the West Virginia Wage Payment and Collection Act, and employers must notify his employees in writing or through a posted notice, maintain enough place accessible to his employees. The notice must be given at least one full pay period prior to the effective date of the change. I spoke briefly with Nathan yesterday, and he would like to push it out to July as well, so you can do some additional research in case there will be any take back or problems with that. I do anticipate on notifying employees through, we send out a bi-weekly timesheet reminder email to everyone. So I would add that in bold red letters, as animated as we can, that it's subject to change, and we would send out personalized notifications to them and post it on department bulletins and things like that. And I do think 10 pay periods, which equates to 20 weeks, would be adequate notification to the employees that they would be receiving their paychecks on a Friday instead of a Thursday. And a lot of the banks that we, the people have, they generally get their funds a day prior to anyway. Unfortunately, UCT, which is the local bank, they don't. You get paid on payday. So I'd like for you to consider moving our payday to Friday, effective July 1, which would be the first pay period for July 8 instead of July 7.
Just a quick question. So when, when there are instances that Monday is a federal holiday and you and Sheri come in, are you eligible for double term?
No.
Why is that?
Because we are a 70-hour leave, and at the subway we have to work 40 hours. And if it's a holiday, those hours are reduced. We do receive comp time hour for hour, but we do not give additional pay for the additional time.
I'm just, I'm just trying to get a different position.
It's not an emergency pay situation.
I, I have briefly reviewed this, and I believe that Betsy is correct in her analysis of identification. I would like to just have a little bit of time to look at it before we make the final changeover, but I think that she's correct in what she said.
I know, one concern I would have, but I think you kind of alleviated it with the July start, is that people do, they set up their finances or are used to doing things a certain way. But I think that leaving until July gives them enough time to kind of make sure.
Do we know how many employees have things directly taken out of their pay check?
That's the personal information we don't.
Yeah, that would affect them. Maybe you have to go around, change, call their banks and, or however they do it. Yeah, okay.
I don't know if you know this or not, I'm just curious, how many employees do we have that are on a 70-hour per pay versus an 80-hour?
I don't have a.
You don't, I have no.
I do, I do know that circuit work employees, county clerk employees, and some of the bailiffs. I think we have three bailiffs, the time bailiff that wants to be.
Four.
So I'm just curious from what Nathan said, before we make a motion on this, or has anything, you want to research it more? Or what, I wasn't sure where you were going.
I think that, I think that she's correct.
Oh, okay.
I think you could go ahead and make that motion. If I find anything that changes my mind, I'll bring it back to you.
Well, that, I understand for some employees, it will be an inconvenience. So I'm hoping with the July date it would work, but.
Okay, well, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that, do you have it written here? Move to approve the payday for Jefferson County employees to Friday instead of Thursdays, beginning the first payday in July 2022.
To move, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Is there any discussion? I wanted to add to the conversation. I've received some emails from some department heads and some electeds that are opposed to this. They said it would put their employees in a burdensome position. Just wanted to inform you guys that I've received those emails. I'm sure some of you have too.
Yeah, that's, that's been my concern.
Yeah, and I'll add to that. I see, I do see it both ways. I see it for our clerks, payroll clerks position and police position as well to move it out. This is a tough one. I see both sides. I mean, it really is. And I mean, do we know how long we've been paying on Thursdays? This is how long that's been taking place, by any chance, or?
A long time.
Long time, okay. Okay, that's what I figured. Okay, yeah. So it is, it is a tough decision. And that's, I guess, I see it both ways. And that's why I was asking, you know, a lot, I know a lot of people set their automatic draws on payday. On flip side, evidence of July, not taking place till July, gets a time to contact their banks to do, start going on Friday, so they're not, it's like this will happen next week or anything. So.
I guess, I guess in 10 pay periods, which equates to 20 weeks.
Now, you said something about VCT doesn't process those things as quickly, the automatic payments, or?
No, no, they process it, but a lot of banks, their funds are available the day before the actual payday, because it's wired to those banks. But VCT does not. Our payday, we get paid on Thursday.
Right. So with VCT, VCT, Friday, you know, they've got the money in their bank account for their paycheck?
Yes.
It's not delayed till Saturday?
No, 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 oh no.
All right, I just want to make sure. We do some bill pay through the bank, and it takes sometimes a couple of days. I want to make sure.
I, I just want to add, I don't know how the vote's going to go, what the direction is. And if we decide not to move this, then I think we need to address some type of compensation where these clerks are on a 70-hour pay period and have to come in on a holiday when everybody else is off to process payroll, which people get the money, so.
Sure. And we did come in, I will add that Sheri and I did come in with the snowstorm. We had a few, was it two weeks ago, whatever. We did come in at 6 o'clock on Sunday morning to get that, to get ahead of the storm, to ensure that everyone was paid.
And that just happened in the past. I'm aware of that. Yeah. I feel the department head has always, you know, compensated the employees in some way, whether it's, you know, comp time. So, I know, it's, it's one of those jobs that you've got to get it done. Just like EMTs.
Is there more discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes 4 to 1. But then we'll move to item number two, the campaign.
Good morning. So before every election, we have to, the commission has to pass a extended emergency absentee voting policy. Code allows for us to extend that out 35 miles from the county seat to medical facilities, nursing homes. And in 2019, House Bill 2362 was passed that even extended that further into people's private homes. In the past, the commission has decided not to extend it that far because that would mean county clerk election staff would actually have to go into private homes to give someone their absentee ballot if they qualify under the rules. Basically, someone has to be confined within three days preceding the election, and they would have to contact our office. We would send someone out to people of opposite political party, would take the ballot out to that person, and they would vote their ballot in their medical facility that they're in. Or if the commission decides to extend it to a home, we would have to go into their private home. Currently, the extended emergency policy has just been to Jefferson Medical Center, Berkeley Medical Center, the VA, Winchester, because a lot of people in this area do go to Winchester, and it is within the 35 miles. And also, we do include hospice of the pain vehicle. It is an inpatient facility. And that is how the policy has been presented to you. I can certainly change it if you wish to extend it to homes. I would ask if you do extend it to homes, that we do come up with a different policy to either have deputies escort our election staff. I just, I don't feel comfortable sending election staff into someone's home without something, some kind of. Yes, exactly. Yeah, it's sad to be that way this day and age, but that's where we are, so.
We have many options for getting the ballot well in advance.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I don't, I don't necessarily believe the policy needs to include homes.
Especially.
I'm okay with the current policy. I'll go ahead and move the motion to extend emergency absentee ballot, absentee voting policy as presented.
Second.
So move to second. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, or should I raise your hands?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number three, intent to be folks, new hire and purchase of.
Good morning. I'm actually gonna, we're gonna get rid of the new hire right now. We had a person take a conditional employment, but almost the next day, she thought about it and decided it wasn't good for her. So we're still in the process now of advertising and doing some more interviews so that. In regard to the, the vehicle, the commission previously approved $50,000 to purchase a new animal control vehicle from, I believe, Capital Outlay. Based on the needs of what the animal control needed, there's going to be leftover, if not the number that you reported. The purchase price of the vehicle was 25,400, and that was for 2022 Chevy Colorado. We obtained quotes for equipment that the vehicle needs, and it looks like that'll be 6,318. That includes the purchase price plus the installation of the equipment. And then we got a quote for about $500 to have it straight to their vehicle. If my math is correct, we're going to have approximately $17,782 left over from that original 50,000 that was granted to animal control. Since, I believe it happened after you approved that 50,000, but obviously before today, we had a animal patrol officer that was involved in an accident. The vehicle that she was using was an older vehicle to begin with, but it was total. We are getting a pay, insurance payout of $8,650 for that vehicle. What we also did was we salvaged as much emergency equipment as we could from that vehicle, including a pretty expensive insert that goes on the bed for, like a kennel, basically. Those will still be usable when we eventually replace that vehicle. The issue is, right now, we currently have three vehicles on the road, and we have three animal patrol officers. And they've been down 25%, there's four of them, been down of personnel for, so they've been running rampant to begin with. But once we hire or fill the fourth position with the Colorado that we will be getting within the next probably three months outfitted, ready for the road, we will not have a spare vehicle for them. So a vehicle goes down for maintenance, or if there's any other mechanical issues with any of our vehicles, we would not have a spare. So basically, I'm here asking permission to put that $17,782 that was previously awarded through Capital Outlay into have maintenance do a RFP for another vehicle. We anticipate using the insurance payout. Along with that, we would have roughly 26,432 to work with in order to try to see if we can get a vehicle for that price that fits that kennel insert, which is one of the, would be one of the stipulations that we would have to use the emergency equipment that we salvage.
Have you confirmed your capital outlays funds available with our financial director? He's throwing a lot of numbers at us, and I don't know if you actually have that much in capital outlay for this purchase.
I was told by multiple people that we were awarded 50,000 for a vehicle at a primary meeting, based on the numbers that we had.
But what I'm saying, I understand those are your numbers. I just want them to confirm that you have the right information. I'm not saying you're doing anything wrong. I just want confirmation that it's sitting there in the capital outlay fund for this purchase.
I know Rich just took over, did find the answer directly in the room here. I don't know if he knows the answer today. So.
Right.
And I didn't think, he just started, let's leave him. Yeah, so I'm certainly okay with that, for sure. I just, I would like to confirm and make sure that enough of the money's there, that's all. Yeah, could we, I mean, would it be, and I don't know if this is proper, would it be proper to do a motion that if the money is confirmed to be there, that it would be?
Yeah.
I had a question, I have more for Nathan. If the funds have already been appropriated, do we have to re-appropriate them? Because we already said they can buy a vehicle with the money.
They were appropriated for a different purpose, I think, not a different vehicle. I guess if, you know, just being very picky for any folks who may be.
It's over, yeah.
Okay. I'll take a stab at this motion, Nathan. I'll move to approve the, the $17,782, and that was going to be used for one vehicle to be rolled over to outfit another vehicle, with the stipulation that it, the capital outlay funds are there in the account. with the stipulation that it, the capital outlay funds are there in the account, and we will have our finance, new finance director, Mr. Richard Field, confirm that and get back to us. Or get back to you. How about that?
I'll second that.
Moving second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries next. We want to move to agenda number four, public hearing, proposed text amendment to the Jefferson County envisioned Jefferson 2035 comprehensive plan. Is there a lead for this discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a conflict with this.
I think I see Jenny on the screen.
Yes.
At your last, at your January 6th meeting, I think, we did an overview of the entire text amendment. So I wasn't sure if you wanted that to happen again, or whether you were just opening it for public comment and taking public comment. I can give a little background, if you want, how we got here.
We don't really need to rehash it. Public comment, anyone in the room wants to make comment, or if anyone online wants to raise their hand?
I have one individual, Stacy Tann. Please have yourself muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great, thank you. In regards to the comp plan amendment that is being proposed, is it time to amend the comp plan? The proposal has been made that the goals and objectives of Jefferson County need to be updated specifically for alternative energy production. The comp plan already encourages the development of alternative energy to some degree for residents and businesses on a scale and an intensity that is appropriate. The existing plan aims to protect our rural and agricultural integrity and not to simply preserve farmland, but retain the farmland with farmers contributing to the agricultural economy. It is not a given that those who are no longer able to productively farm only have the option to turn their land into residential subdivisions. In April 2021, this commission approved a zoning amendment for solar facilities as a land use, declaring there have been major changes that were not anticipated, but none were identified. The recommendations before us today include designating all energy production facilities as a principal permitted use primarily on farmland, all within rural and residential districts, which causes concern in the community as a whole as those districts account for approximately 85% of the county. There are no guidelines as to how many acres could be consumed. The first proposed facility, the first proposed facility, Wild Hill, involves 800 acres. The next in line, High Horizons, 506. How many more to follow? To put this into perspective, other large acreage uses are Shepherd University at 325 and Summit Point Raceway at 800. Neither restricted by a security fence around the perimeter and still allow wildlife to pass through. It is also not a given that new infrastructure won't be needed to support the expansion of renewable energy. Aside from the potential of new transmission lines cutting through our county, both Wild Hill and High Horizons plan to add new substations. The public has voiced our understanding the transition to renewable energy is coming, and it is supported, but continually requested that a conditional use with rational safeguards be implemented. When the comp plan was approved in 2015, it included that non-agricultural use in rural areas should be evaluated under the conditional use process. As I look back at the drafting of the conditional use process now in effect, which was amended in 2017 by the commission, which included commissioners Tab and Hudson, they requested all commercial uses in the residential and rural zoning districts be adjusted from not permitted to conditional and develop additional criteria for the commercial uses. Under conditional use, the county is afforded more control to evaluate whether the location and design of each project is appropriate. Not that much has really changed. I do hope this commission reconsideres the conditional use with reasonable restrictions opposed to amending the comp plan to protect the county from overdevelopment and overconsumption of valuable farmland. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't have any other attendees with their answers.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to leave this open for two weeks if there's more public comment to come to us. If all commissions in agreement. With that, we can move back to agenda, or move to agenda number five. Do you want to let Steve know? Please, thank you. But interviews and appointments, the Jefferson County Deputy Sheriff's Civil Service Commission, one in spite of term in September 29th. There's only one applicant.
First, Gabe, if you have any questions. There are three appointments, that's three appointments come from three different entities. As you know, I'm your appointment, so if you need clarification on why you're actually doing this, I'm here with Steve, and I can explain it to you.
Well, we're so in our attorney.
Okay.
Yeah, I've got questions for Nathan. Nathan? About the appointment to the Public Service Commission. My understanding of reading the code, as Mr. Cox already said, there's three different positions appointed by three different bodies. Looks like we're being asked to appoint someone today, and we've already made our appointments to the board with Mr. Cox. I think this appointment needs to come from the bar. I've heard they haven't done it yet.
I believe that you should delay this appointment until the bar provides you with it.
Yeah.
With a candidate, I don't think you can just.
That's what I thought.
Is there anything you wanted to add?
So, yes. 714 and 3, state code 714 and 3 states that in the event the bar association or sheriff deputy's association fails to make an appointment within the time prescribed in this section, therefore, in such appointment shall be made by the county commission. That was sentence number three. And sentence number nine, it states that if within 10 days that a commissioner isn't appointed, that's when the county commission steps in to take care of that. In 2013, there was an appointment that was made that we think was made. The only evidence we have of the bar association making that appointment is the website used to show the expiration date of a former commissioner. In November, I reached out to the bar association and informed them to make an appointment. And for three months, they have failed to make that appointment. With absolutely no evidence that they made an appointment from 2017, dating back to the last possible appointment that they actually stepped up to take care of, which was 2013. And so we are currently trying to build the rules and regulations, and we're doing this with two commissioners rather than three. And it is turning out to be an extremely tough task. We would love to have a third commissioner on the workforce.
So basically, if the bar doesn't appoint somebody, the commission has the authority to do so.
Yes, and that's again, under 714 and 3, that's sentence number three of state code. And then you'll see in actually two different spots that the appointments must be done within 10 days of the vacation.
Nathan, is that how you, did you see that part as well, too?
Yeah, if the county commissioner removes a commissioner, you're supposed to appoint someone within 10 days. I believe that the, I believe that the commission should reach out to the bar and, and again, seek an appointment. If they fail to create an appointment, then we do that.
So you're saying we should ask them, and then if they don't provide us somebody, then we appoint somebody?
I think that they should be given every opportunity. Because it's, there's a reason that the code is set for people from different walks of life, as it were, you know what I mean? I think we want a willing commissioner on there who will actually help the commission.
I understand.
And then the next step, if they do not appoint someone, the bar association, are we required, if we make the appointment, does it have to be somebody with a, you know, as a lawyer? That was my impression of the intent of the legislation.
Yeah, I believe that the intent of legislation is to have some people. And so that would certainly be the best practice. If we can't find someone from the bar, then I think we have to take that step. The rules and regulations for what the individual has to be diswritten, you can find that.
Okay. All right. I will lean on our legal advisor here, just to, just to give them an opportunity. Certainly, if they do not respond, I'm fully prepared to appoint somebody. So I want to move the motion to have our county minister send the bar association a re-mail letter, however, to ask for an appointment. And ask for them to send us some names or ask for who would be interested. And in that time, we don't receive anything back in, but we think 30 days.
That's good for you.
Yeah, we'll put it back on the agenda.
It's all second, is there more discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries next.
He might be on them.
Yes. All right, we can move to agenda number six, Russell Burgess, Records Management and Preservation Board.
And anyone hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Good morning, commissioners. I'm here this morning to ask for your approval and acceptance of two grant requests that were made to the Records Management and Preservation Board. The first grant was for the county clerk $8,603 to purchase a map cabinet with Mylar sleeves to preserve the county's original oversized maps. And the second grant request that we were approved for was to the county commission for $9,545 to scan and index land development records, starting with building permits. I know that the second grant for $9,545 does require a 10% match from the county commission, and that has been put in the IT budget request. Other than that, that's what I'm here to ask, if you all will approve and accept those grants on behalf of the county clerk and the county commission this morning.
Russ, you said the 10% for the county commission is in your IT budget request. That means, you know, after July, right, in the new budget?
Yes, that, that is when, this grant would be for the fiscal year July 1, 2022 to June 30, 2023.
Again, yeah, and it's just with that, you know, the little stuff, so, yeah. Okay, sounds good.
If you have any other questions, other than that, just.
I'll move to approve the Records Management and Preservation Board's grant awards in the amount of $8,603 to purchase a map cabinet with Mylar sleeves to preserve the county's original oversized maps, and the county commission $9,545 to scan and index land development records, starting with building permits.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries next.
Thank you very much, everyone. Have a wonderful morning.
You too.
It'll be good to get the, well, the building, you know, planning and zoning stuff. Yeah. And indexed. And an index.
Is Chad Wallen present?
Is that president, if he's online or not? Yeah.
Yes. Good morning.
Okay. This is for sheet zoning map amendment. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, this is a request that the zoning request be sent to the planning commission to determine consistency with the comprehensive plan and to set a public hearing before the county commission.
I just realized I gotta recuse myself on this, on this agenda.
Mr. President, as a, just as a practical point, Jimmy has informed me that the first PC meeting that is available tomorrow is the eighth. I'm going to have to set a public hearing within 60 days of today's date, but we have to be after that.
Anything that works for everybody? I don't think that'd be too late, right? The 17th?
Seventeenth.
60 days from today. Lawyers are people that move their doctors. I can't do that much.
I'll take the 17th.
So I guess I'll move, I move to accept the zoning map amendment request and refer it to the planning commission for review of comprehensive plan for consistency and to schedule a public hearing for the county commission on March 17th. So moving second, is there more discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four to one.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now we're for the Green Hill zoning map amendment. It's the same thing?
Yes, same request.
All right, I'll move to accept the zoning map amendment request referring to, refer it to the planning commission for review of the comprehensive or review of comprehensive plan consistency and to schedule a public hearing for the commission on March 17th. Moving second, is there more discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four to one.
Thank you.
Just want to tell Stevie to come back in. Please, thank you. Is Kelly Franklin online? So what is the commission's literature?
I have my issue number six. It will be an open session if you want to discuss that.
Yeah, that's how we, we go.
I do not believe that Mr. Harding is going to appear, although we are a little early, but he he may appear, but he also gave. I just wanted to inform the Commission that, as you are aware, the paralegal that we had in our civil division of the prosecutor's office left for same family reasons primarily. And so she could spend a little more time with her family. And we have, we got interviews, we had a couple of really outstanding candidates. I have to say. But one stood out, and her name is Jamie Howser. Her name is Jamie Howser. She lives locally here and has worked. Most recently, it's working in Leesburg at an attorney's office, but she's got quite a good resume. She's worked for National Education Loan Companies. She's worked for National Bookseller in a regional capacity. She's worked for financial investment services. She's worked for a group that worked for the space industry. And she's been a long-term legal assistant in paralegal in Form Jam here. Survey and currently in Leesburg. I believe that we're very fortunate to be able to obtain her services. And I'm really looking forward to working with her. The salary would not have an impact on the budget. It would be 43,500.
When's your start date?
And her first day would be February 21st of this year. So I think that's all the information that you need. And if you feel pleased, the Commission should approve her hire and we would proceed with getting her on board.
I'll move to approve hire Jamie Howser for the amount of 43,500. Her start date will be February 21st, 2022.
Second.
So moving second, is there more discussion?
Sure. So when you're on the hires, do you rely on the commission office or do you run background checks? How do you feel about checking references in the background?
Um, that would be up to the prosecutor.
Sandy. It's only supposed to be a holiday. Good day.
It's a Monday? Is it? All right, well, good point. I just added a couple. That would be a really good day to break in.
I know.
Okay, well, let's make it the 22nd.
I'm in my motion for the start date to be February 22nd.
Well, that's president.
Thanks for pointing that out.
Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
You had some qualified applicants. That's encouraging. Yes.
Are you ready for 14?
Oh, okay.
Does it fit in our time constraints?
I would think so. I think it's simple, but maybe not everybody. If you've read the background on this, Farmland Protection Board employee is paid through Farmland Protection Board funds, but is an employee of Jefferson County Commission. That sure helps with benefits and so forth. And when, you know, we started this all, Farmland Protection Board had zero money and was done by volunteers. And then there was, you know, staff hired, shared responsibilities, and time went on. We had one person full-time for the program, and she does an amazing job. But we have been trying to, the JCDAs had always helped with some of the office management for the Farmland Protection Board, but we've been trying to wean ourselves off of JCDAs since we now have money not to splurge, but to, you know, do our work more independently. So we've withdrawn our financial accounting needs from the JCDAs, and we feel now it's time that, you know, that Liz does not report to Mr. Jarvis, the JCDAs, but that she could be her own department head and submit her time sheet as need be to the finance office. I think that's the best way to do it. If anybody has any other suggestions, you kind of make a one-person, you know, employee stand-alone, I thought, as a department head. And then, you know, just like any other department head, submit time sheets and so forth.
And then I see you have one here. You know, reporting to finance and county commission offices, so we'd say county administrator.
Yeah, yeah, that would be good.
Yeah.
And then Tom Sheas would also give you county administrator. Yeah, right, yeah. So I was just trying to make sure that. Yeah.
What else does the JCDAs provide that office down? Is there anything else?
No, that, that's it now. I mean, we took all the bookkeeping and accounting services. You know, we've got our own now, and it's just that, you know, she doesn't need to report to Mr. Jarvis, or they don't need to report her time and all that vacation. That she self-reports, just as any other department head, to finance and commission offices.
And just to be clear, this is, this is a self-sustaining organization. They have their funds in there.
Yes, yes, we, and we feel very fortunate. We, we do have funds now to do this. So are there any other questions? I'll just make the motion to approve the Farmland Protection Board's Director, Elizabeth Wheeler, as a department head that reports to both finance and commission offices.
I'll second that.
The movement seconded. Is there any more discussion?
Do you have an effective date immediately or?
Oh, what's, what's the next pay period? I don't know.
Well, yeah, I think they just.
We can pay this week. So we'll be turning our time sheets on Friday?
Right.
Or next Friday, I'm sorry, next Friday for the next pay period. So, so what makes sense for you to be avoiding the next effective date? So maybe it affected the 14th?
Okay.
February 14th. And I'll add to my motion to make it effective February 14th.
So more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Whoever, I guess whoever's failed.
Did y'all want to talk about budget schedule?
I think we can talk with her. I don't want to try to mess with that.
We had, like, um, if you'd like to come up, we're going to talk about the budget schedule. See what's working for everybody. So I guess I'll start off a little bit. I have conflicts both Tuesday and Wednesday.
Oh.
I'm sure I can.
So you have Tuesdays and Wednesdays?
Yeah.
Conflicts.
Both evenings, yeah. So for me, even if we move those, the day, if you wanted to switch days, but those evenings, I.
I think we could all, you need to accommodate the shelves.
Yeah, that's true.
We could do, I don't know.
I can do whatever. So whatever.
Yeah, I mean, there's a chance I might be somewhere next week, but I can still do it online.
On those two days.
Six, yeah, yep, or one hour on Wednesday.
Okay, so would we just move it up to earlier in the day?
So I don't know. That'll work with the show.
Yeah.
Do you have any ideas, Mr.?
Could we start it at five instead of six? Would that help?
On which day? Tuesday, no.
No, not at all.
I gotta be smart. Four o'clock.
Until when?
Till 7:20.
You think we started at 7:20?
Well, it would take me an hour to get here.
So Tuesdays are definitely, you're not available at all. No adjustment.
And I'm fine if I can miss a day, I can just watch it, but if I miss both days, it's kind of.
Oh, it's too much. It's too much to keep up with.
It's missing?
So what we do Monday or Tuesdays and skip into Monday? And then if you can start Wednesday at five o'clock, because I know we definitely want to make Wednesday the night for sure. Because those are the big ones. But if maybe we could start at five o'clock.
So move all of Tuesday to Monday and then start Wednesday at five o'clock.
And then what about Thursday? All right, I just want to make sure it's fine.
But I probably won't be here Wednesday, but I can just watch that online, as long as you guys ask good questions.
Well, while you're in class, you can text us. Oh, you're supposed to be paying attention to that.
Well, yeah, I guess we'll have to get to our department heads promptly, let them know.
Yeah, figure, figure something out.
All right.
So that's it. Move all Tuesday to Monday, starting at the same time at six, and then Wednesday start at five instead of six. What's probably not going to be here, you can leave at six.
We'll just change Tuesday.
Yeah.
Not easy. Oh, yeah.
Oh, go ahead, come up here if you want. Kelly Franklin, Jefferson County Day Report, sir.
I have Jennifer Lyons with me today. She's a new contract secretary.
This is for the community corrections grant. If you want to go then do history. What do you need from us?
Yes, sir. So I'm here today to request the Commission to enter a contractual agreement with DJCS for the community corrections grant. The county has applied and been awarded the grant since 2015. It, of course, supports public safety. The Jefferson Day reports that it provides medical and mental health treatments to clients in the community. A little bit of background information, just in the past year, from the grant funding received, we provided 9,992 medical and mental health treatments and interventions. And that's just for clients in Jefferson County community. So it's very basic. We had 704 referrals from Jefferson County sources, mainly the court system in 2021. So that funding does help all of those clients. It also helps save on the county jail bill. So just the 244 clients that, you know, around $48 a day is an $11,000 plus dollar savings. So it does benefit the clients here in the community, especially for the psychological services and also the psychiatric services, which are difficult to get into right now. So I do have the forms today. If you are in agreement to enter the contract with DJCS, it does require a couple of signatures, which are due on March 14th.
And you have, and the matched funds is in there?
The matching funds is in there, yes. We are not asking for any additional funding.
Yeah.
I'll move, I'll move the motion to authorize our chairman to act in behalf to enter into a correction agreement with the Justice Division of Justice and Administrative Services to receive and administer grant funds pursuant to visions of community corrections program.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there more discussion?
I'm just a general question. I'm sure these have been some times.
It has been.
I mean, it's probably increased the stress level. I know, I feel more so.
The services, we have seen a triple amount of requests for psychiatric services and general family therapy, domestic-related cases over the past year.
Yeah, people living together a little too closely. Well, thank you for your good work.
Thank you.
Is there any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Also have a signature paper.
She's still, yes, she's back there.
I think the very last page is. Thank you.
Yes, no.
Thank you.
Joe, want to go then do Rogers since we swapped him?
Terry over here. Want to know why I didn't answer the phone? I said I don't sleep with the cell phone. Okay, we're here for two items. The first one is the presentation, the impact fees, calendar year 2021 annual report and the impact fees fiscal year 2023 capital improvement plan. And what these two documents do is the annual report documents the activity and what all occurred in that prior calendar year and becomes the official record for impact fees and demonstrates that the program was managed in accordance with the rules, ordinances, whatever. The capital improvement plan is the document that would demonstrate that in moving forward, you're proposing to spend your impact fees in accordance with the rules and the ordinances and the impact fee program. And that has the purpose of two documents, and it just keeps rolling forward each year. So. Pursuant to Jefferson County Impact Fee Procedures Ordinance, 76.81, at least once every year and not later than January 31st, beginning in the year 2005, and prior to County Commission's adoption of the annual budget capital. and prior county commission's adoption of the annual budget capital improvements program, were to submit an annual report to the county commission on the subject of impact fees. What's the name of the report? Permitting for new residential construction in Jefferson County, calendar year 2021, decreased relative to county calendar year 2020. There were 444 impact fee applications processed in calendar year 2021 versus 601 residential impact fee applications in calendar year 2020. But I want to point out that in 2020, we had a one-time single project that submitted impact fee applications and paid fees for a 309-unit apartment complex. So if you back that out and go to the single family, we didn't have any multi-family again in 2021. We actually have 444 units in 2021, single-family residential versus 292 in 2020, which is a 52% increase. Permitting for commercial construction in Jefferson County in calendar year 2021 decreased relative to 2020. And that's on the next page in Table 1B. She had nine commercial projects in 2021 versus 10 in 2020. The accounting of fees collected today is based on the calendar year, since this report is due to the commission in January of each year. Table 2 presents the total fee collection, which shows, that's county and municipal combined, residential and commercial, and it shows $2,087,096 were collected in impact fees in 2021. Table 2 presents the total fees, collection data, or total fee collection data. Excuse me, no, sorry. Tables 3 and 4 present financial data categorized into county municipal districts. So in Table 3, in the county municipal tax districts, you collected $1,765,848 of that, approximately $2 million. And you would see that the bulk of the activities in the Charlestown and Shepherdstown districts. Table 4 is that collected within the municipalities. Now, you collected $321,248 in the municipalities with the bulk of it coming in the Charlestown Corporation Tax District. Table 5 is the general accounting of the impact fee accounts for the calendar year. Table 6 is the impact fee holding accounts. Michelle gets the money and it goes into a general account. And then from there, she disperses it to the impact fees entities, each individual holding accounts. So for schools, at the end of 2021, they had $8,169,171 in their account. Law enforcement, that's the sheriff's department, had $257,886. Parks and Recreation had $643,405. And the ambulance authority EMS had $32,872. And we began collecting, when you adopted the new impact fees and study in September 2021, we started collecting funds for admin facilities, which is cost recovery on courts. And basically, we're getting cost recovery on the excess capacity that exists in the prosecutor's office building. So there was extra room to expand in the future, and we can recover that. And I think that's around, we'll get into it, it's about 200,000, I think, you can get back of impact fees. Fees are dispersed from the long-term accounts for only two reasons. Either somebody gets refunded or an impact fee entity submits a requisition to pay for an impact fee fundable project. Refunds are only processed when a permit's revoked, building permit. And upon written request of the building permit applicant, there were seven refunds processed in calendar year 2021. And they were, I think, were mainly, they requested a refund because they wanted to then resubmit under the new lower impact. We don't typically see refunds. Table 7, it's just a note that, we'll get into this in the capital improvement plan report, that fee fundable projects that are proposed are shown there in Table 7, and I'll touch on that when we get to the capital improvement program. Impact, Table 8 shows the withdrawals that occurred through 2021 from each of the impact fee entity accounts. Number of them are refunds and pay for the recalculation study. And. That's basically it. So in 2020, the county commission contracted with Tishur Vias to recalculate the impact fees. Recalculations completed in 2021, and new impact fees were adopted by the county commission on September 2nd, 2021. The following impact fee ordinances were amended to reflect the new impact fee schedules for each impact fee entity. The fee schedules are contained within those ordinances, so you have to adopt new ordinances updating that portion of each ordinance you did, and you added administrative facilities. In 2013, the county commission adopted ordinance number 2013-1, which amended the law enforcement ordinance number 2005-1 and the EMS ordinance number 2005-3, reducing the commercial impact fees by 99.5% of the actual impact fee calculation for new commercial development. So at that time, since then, we've been only charging half a percent of what the actual impact fee was calculated to be. And that was done, I think, as like an incentive for commercial development.
It was not in the research, well, in the midst of the research.
So then, that's carried on since then, and the August 5th, 2021 county commission meeting, county commission then voted to reduce the commercial impact fee to zero. The impact fees procedure ordinance was amended June 17th, 2021, provide for the change in use. This has to do with the low hotel property in the hearing we had on that. This resulted out of that, that to provide for the change in use based only on the incremental increase in the fee for the additional public facilities needed, that's all language out of the ordinance. Confusing. Provided, however, that any change of a non-residential structure to residential or multi-residential structure, and what was occurring was the hotel being a commercial structure was being converted to apartments and some commercial stores on the first floor, that they shall not be assessed an impact fee of such change in use which conditions apply. And so with regard to ordinances, that is what all occurred in 2021. So with regard to fiscal year 2023, impact fee fundable projects, tables 9 through 13 list all potentially fundable projects. And I'll just tell you what they are. I know what you talk about, and I want you to see. You have a regional student support center. The school board's asking for, sheriff's department's asking for a weapons training qualifications range, expansion of that, I think. Interior expansion of temporary sheriff's office space, did new growth. Parks and Rec is doing a Sam Michaels Park Amphitheater ADA Phase 2 improvement, Sam Michaels Park Playground, James Height Park Parking, and Sam Michaels Park Subject Upgrades. And with EMS, you have the continuing ongoing $81,000 a year mortgage payment. That's cost recovery where you're trying to get back what you paid the excess capacity there for future growth. I think that totals about $520,000. So you can be able to get back how to impact these. And then administrative facilities. So we've collected $5,000 or $6,000 so far. We have no, there was no submission with regard to county administrative facilities, especially considering the change in staffing. But I think once everything gets settled here, the next year, we'll work with county administrator on an official submission to have those impact fees pulled out and reimbursed to the county in your general fund as part of the cost recovery for the cost that you paid on the prosecutor's office. You follow me, Samuel? All right. So with regard to boundary districts, the only fee category which utilizes fee districts in law enforcement is law enforcement. The boundaries of these districts coincide with current municipal boundaries. Therefore, development projects, municipalities do not pay law enforcement, and that's because they each have their own law enforcement entities. Fee schedule changes. In 2021, all four impact fee categories underwent a recalculation with the addition of administrative facilities. Overall, the county commission reduced the current impact fee schedule amounts. The next impact fee recalculation should occur in calendar year 2026. With regard to inflationary adjustments, which the intent there is that you're doing a recalculation, which takes into current market values and values of the assets at that time, but you're only doing those recalculations every five years. So the ordinance addresses inflationary adjustments in between those calculations on a yearly basis. So it's generally recommended that all fee schedules not recalculated in any given calendar year be adjusted for inflation. So by dictating the impact fees procedures ordinance 2003-1, the impact fee program specialist, that is Michelle, she's the person that manages all the stuff in the impact fee program. She must use the price indexes for gross government fixed investment by type, which is published by the United States Bureau of Economic Analysis, using Table 14. And in accordance with the impact fee procedures ordinance 2003-1, Section 6B, the annual inflation adjustment is to be applied on April 1st of 2022 and any year unless the county commission acts to stay these adjustments. And we say that considering that a recalculation study recently occurred in 2020 when new fees were established, that we would recommend just staying the inflationary adjustment. Proposed changes to level service standards, and that has to do with, when you're talking level of service, what's the level of service that's provided by Parks and Rec, and what's provided by law enforcement and EMS? And it can get broken down, for example, on land for Parks and Rec, every citizen, the level of services every citizen gets, like, say, one thousandth of an acre of land is provided for a citizen, okay? So when you're, what you're saying to new growth is, when you come here, we don't want our land in the park system to become more crowded, so you're going to pay for your one, one thousandth of an acre that we're going to buy to keep increasing parks over the years. And therefore, existing citizens don't suffer, and new citizens are paying their way on that. That's what level service refers to. With school systems, it can be that there's a half a square foot per person with regard to buildings and so forth. And you're trying to end up where you're adding facilities so that you've got 500 square feet of square feet for 30 kids in a classroom, you're maintaining that level of service. You're not going to end up with 50 kids and 500 square feet. That's the way the math works out on it. That's the intent here with impact fees. So West Virginia Code, Section 7-20 requires that the county maintain as part of its capital improvement program level of service standards for impact fee capital categories. The level of service standards for the categories of schools, law enforcement, Parks and Rec, and EMS services, and the new administrative facilities were last updated and adopted in September 2021. So regardless of whether the county commission adopts any or all the recalculated fee schedules, the recalculation, and that exercise in effect recalibrates the level of service standards for Jefferson County. And that next level calculation will be done in 2026. So it's kind of like if you have like a 401K plan, and you want 50% stocks and 50% of bonds, and that after the year ends, you now got 60% stocks instead of 50%, so you recalibrate it, rebalance it, to get your money back where you want it. That's what happens with the level of service calculation is Parks and Rec might have 50% of their assets in land, 50% is in facilities. And then they go out and get grant money, and they're not buying land with it, they're building more facilities. So when the calculation gets redone, they determine that they have 60% of facilities and 40% of land. And here's why that's important to have that done periodically and adopt that to level of service, is that my understanding is with this board, and we've met with them, is they prefer right now to be putting most of their money into facilities and improvements in the parks and not buying land. So what happened, because this has occurred since the last calculation five or six years ago, it rebalanced that to where like about 80% of their money can now go to park improvements instead of like 60%. And they're real happy about that. So that's what, that's what happens when we talk level of service and a rebalancing of it and so forth. Okay. The inflation adjustments, the Table 14 that we talked about from the United States Bureau of Economic Analysis is the source for the data for the price indexes. You turn to Table 14. That's the table where Michelle takes those numbers and determines the percentage difference, and you come up with an adjustment factor for each of the entities. So essentially, administrative facilities, the inflationary adjustment would be 2.4%, schools 2.5%, law and EMS 3.4%, and parks would be 3.5%. So the result of that is schools, you're only charging the dollar, so it's just going to stay at a dollar. Law enforcement, your impact fee would go up anywhere from $13 to $18 due to inflation. Commercial, we're not charging anything. Parks and Rec, if the fee's going to go up, it'd go up anywhere from $24 to $33. And for EMS, it would go up $2 to $3, and you're not charging anything for commercial there. And then administrative facilities, you're charging $44, and it would go up $1 to $45. So then if you turn to Table 20, it's on page 22, you get the inflationary adjusted fee schedule. So for, let's see, so for single-family townhomes and duplexes, the fee would go up $55. For multifamily, the fee would go up $50. So that's what the inflationary adjustment would be. And then the last page is, you have a section in the ordinance that's required by state code to provide for an affordable housing index and a discount, affordable housing discount. That's based on the housing index, which is produced by the state tax department. And it takes the average appraised value of properties of each of the counties provided by the assessor, and then they also have date on the median value, et cetera. So we take that number, which is $279,253 for Jefferson County in tax year 2021. That's the average appraised value of a house in Jefferson County. So under the state code and the ordinance, we say that if you're at 60% of that value, which is $167,552, if you're doing a house that costs that much or less, you're entitled to an affordable housing discount, and you pay significantly less in impact fees. There's also, the county commission, a couple of years back, adjusted the threshold to get that discount for multifamily, because they thought essentially it was being abused by projects that were intended for, you call them luxury apartments, okay? So we lowered that threshold to 40% of that housing index, which would mean the apartment's value would have to be $111,701 or less. So that occurred, and I just mentioned a couple things before we move on to the motions. Just with regard to housing index, and it takes all the counties, the average state, the average appraised value of residential dwelling in West Virginia is $100,000. is $151,000, and Jefferson County is $279,000. And in that, and there's about 10 counties that are above that state average. The counties that I'll note that are in that group at the top are Jefferson, Hampshire, then Berkeley, Mon County, and Orbin County falls in there. And then I'll just point out that at the bottom, you've got counties in the southern part of the state, Wauklay County's $54,000, and McDowell's the lowest, $25,000. So anyways, I just wanted to point that out, just find the data. So on the agenda request, we have two motions. We have, we have a request for you to accept the impact fee and the reports presented, and then we need a motion as to whether you want to approve the annual inflationary adjustments, or if you want to stay those adjustments.
I'll make the motion to accept the calendar year 2021 impact fees annual report for the Office of Impact Fees as presented.
Second. Moving second, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries now.
And you need another motion to approve the numbers that's presented? We need a motion on whether or not you want to stay the inflationary adjustments.
Definitely, that was your recommendation for this year, right?
We just did it. We just took all that into account in a recent study. I don't see why to go through change in ordinances and everything again. Yeah, I'll move to stay with the inflationary adjustments for this year, or as presented, I guess I should say.
Second, so you have discussion?
Yes, and I understand Roger's statement. We just did this recalculation, and I understand those figures are valid, but I'm just going to vote against it protesting the current school impact fee, which I think will have a significant negative effect on the county in the near future.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to one.
I want to hand out some data. This is the impact fees that have been collected since the beginning of the adoption of impact fees, just so you have it, know how much everybody spent, how much they currently hold.
I just want to say thank you for all the wonderful, very thorough. Thank you. It was very good. Yes, as always, the answers, if you have a question, the answer's there, you just have to figure it out. You've got it all right here. Thank you.
The next document is the impact fees fiscal year 2023 capital improvement plan, and that fiscal year starts in the counties July 1, 2023. So pursuant to West Virginia State Code, Chapter 7, Article 20, Section 6, counties which have enabled impact fees must maintain an impact fee program capital improvement plan. All the projects listed in the CIP are eligible for funding by impact fees, either in whole or in part. Whether a project may be wholly or partially funded depends on whether the project is exclusively needed due to new growth, or is only partially required due to conditions of new growth. Several impact fee funded projects submitted for fiscal year 23 will require additional funding from other sources. For example, the mortgage payment for EMS headquarters facility will require partial payment from the department's budget. We don't collect enough impact fees a year to pay the whole thing. Parks and Recreation's amphitheater playground equipment, safety system upgrades will be partially funded by other sources available to them, including grants. School Board's regional student support center project will be partially funded by other funding sources available to the school board. This document constitutes Jefferson County Impact Fee Program Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal year 2023. For the entities eligible for impact fee funding, their names and associated impact fee category indicated in the list below, which is schools, law enforcement, Parks and Recreation, EMS, and administrative facilities. The total funding requested for all projects over the upcoming fiscal year, as well as the next five outlined years, is $141,553,828. Now, this amount, $4,376,000, represents the funding request for fiscal year 2023. Proposed projects that directly impact the county budget also require, when they're submitting their annual capital improvement plan request to Michelle, would require a Form 2B, which is a budget impact analysis, that they would have to take a look at the county's general fund and your budget and how it impacts it, if they're needing funding from it. How are the projects submitted for fiscal year 2023, did not require funding from the county's general or capital outlay funds? This document lists planned capital projects within the Jefferson County Impact Fee Program, of which some entities have several options for funding available to them. General revenues available fund capital projects may be classed into one of the following categories. You have direct county support, and that's funding from your general fund and full severance funds. General obligation or construction bonds, and that would be like the school board's construction bonds. State support, such as school building authority or grants to other state agencies. Federal grants. Impact fees. Entity-specific user fees, like Parks and Rec charging to register for a gymnastics class, or fees that they charge to get into the park, et cetera. And then you have donations and gifts, of which I can't recall in 20 years anyone donating anything.
Well, hasn't some land been donated or something?
Yeah, it has part of land development, but that's basically an offset to the fees that you should have paid to begin with, $500,000. All right, so with regard to direct county support, the county commission has the authority to use monies from the general and full severance fund to assist with funding of county projects. Previously, several dedicated capital outlay funds have been established for this purpose using general fund revenue. You funded Sam Michaels Park Community Center, Emergency Communications Center, the Sheriff's Department, the county maintenance facility, all of which are in the Bardet Industrial Park. You provided funding to renovate the old jail for the circuit court, and much recently, the purchase and renovation of the Gray Building, which now houses the prosecuting attorney's office. Funds have also assisted with the mortgage payments for the new emergency services agency building. Then you have general obligation and construction bonds. Only the county commission and the Board of Education may propose special levies to fund capital projects. In both cases, the questionable levy must be placed before the county's voters and must receive a minimum of 60% of the vote. Board of Education has floated several construction bonds which have funded expansion and renovation projects. The county commission, through its building commission, may borrow money from any type of lending institution or issue general obligation bonds. Regarding the state support, the only significant source of state-supplied capital funding for the county comes from the state's school building authority. This entity sets school construction standards and releases funds generally for entities that bring significant cash matches. No other entity, including the county commission, has an equivalent state funding agency. Federal support. Federal monies have not been predictable or reliable revenue stream to fund capital projects within Jefferson County. The Sheriff's Department has in the past received some federal monies for capital projects, but historically, the funding amounts have been relatively small and random in nature. Federal monies are also available fund capital projects for EMS entities. So moving on to the requests that they submitted. Table 1 lists all Priority 1 projects that are considered urgent or mandatory, as requested by each entity. Not all these projects are eligible for funding by impact fees, but it's important enough that these projects have been described by the respective entities as having urgent and mandatory funding needs. So if I turn to Table 1, you only have the Board of Education and Emergency Services showing Priority 1 projects as urgent or mandatory. So the school board shows $115,050,000 in needs, and the EMS, $520,000, that's mandatory on cost recovery on that mortgage payment, it's $520,000. Table 2 lists all urgent and non-urgent capital improvement projects requested by each entity, regardless of being funded by impact fees. So without considering where the funding would come from, Table 2 shows their wish list of everything that they would like to do. So the Board of Education's showing $115,050,000. Now, the sheriff is showing $8,584,500 worth of things on their wish list. Parks and Recreation is showing $12,199,000. EMS, $520,238. And the county administrative facilities is $182,220. So through that impact fee for administrative facilities, you can recover $182,220 back into your general fund. And we think that the rate we're collecting now, it's about 20,000 a year, so it's going to take a while to get it. So going back to Table 3, identifies only those projects that are impact fee fundable, which are eligible for funding by impact fees, either in whole or in part. So. So here's where, this is where it all boils down to, and here's where Michelle, Michelle and I go through stuff and polish it down to what do we have in each entity's impact fee account as far as funding? What are they asking for? And what do we see can be funded? Sometimes it's just one project, sometimes you can get two or three in there. They have available funds. So the Board of Education, and then talking to them, it got pared down to the Regional Student Support Center, which they're estimating is $17 million. Their current request is $1 million in FY 2023, with another $2 million in FY '24, '25, and '26, for a total of $7 million. They currently have in hand $250,000 from other sources.
Next donation, actually.
And we called them, and they said that they will get the other, like, $10 million that they need from other sources. So they're well aware that they essentially have about $8 million in impact fees to spend, and that's it for a while. So our stance is full funding's currently available in the school's account for this million-dollar request in FY '23. Requisitions will be allocated 50% towards the elementary school and land capital category in their account, 50% towards middle and high school and land capital category. The CIP impact fees under request through FY '28 is currently available, which would complete this funding request. Any questions on that one? Okay. Moving on to the sheriff. He's asking for $100,000 total, $25,000 in FY '23, and $25,000 in each FY '24, '25, and '26, for this weapons training qualifications range. And then with regard to internal expansion, at the sheriff's office due to new growth, $200,000. You'd already given him $20,000 last time. He's asking for the other 180, another 180, and he has no other funding source on those. Those are fully impact fee fundable, from my understanding, but it's all due to new growth when we questioned it, for a total of $205,000. So our stance on that was full funding's currently available in law enforcement account for the $25,000 request in fiscal year 2023. The CIP impact fees funding request to fiscal year 2028 is $100,000, and is currently available, which completes this funding request. With regard to the expansion of the office, full funding's currently available in law enforcement account for this $180,000 request in fiscal year 2023, which is to complete the project. No additional funding request in future fiscal years is indicated, and this appears to be a one-time request for this project. Any questions on that? Okay. Parks and Recreation. We have four projects. Sam Michaels Park Amphitheater Phase 2 project, they're asking for $100,000 in fiscal year 2023 only. They have $1,075,000 from other sources to put towards that project. The Sam Michaels Park Playground, they're asking for $65,000 in fiscal 2023 only. They have $65,000 from other sources to put with that project. James Height Park Parking, they're asking for $120,000 only in fiscal year 2023. They do not need any other funding. James Height, or Sam Michaels Park Septic Upgrades, they're asking for $150,000 in fiscal year 2023 only. They have $600,000 from other sources to put with that project. So they're asking for a total of $435,000 from impact fees, and they have the funding to cover that. Any questions? Okay. So, yeah, they have the funding, and our recommendation is to fund them. So moving on to EMS. They're asking for the $81,000 for the mortgage in fiscal year 2023. We don't have that much, so therefore, due to limited funds in EMS and impact fee account, this request is approved for only $30,000 of funding in fiscal year 2023, not the full $81,000 request. A request for additional funding may be made as additional EMS and impact fee revenues collected in 2023, because you can update the CIP at any time and amend it, and that has occurred on occasion. However, at this time, funding for the $51,000 remainder of the fiscal year 2023 mortgage payment will need to come from another source. Our understanding is that over the years, it's came from their budget, because it's fluctuated how much we can give them in each year, depending on how fast we collect impact fees for them. So it also appears that there'll be insufficient funding in future fiscal years to pay that, so we want to point that out, because we're only averaging about 20,000 a year, so they'll need to find another funding source, and they've always had one. Any questions? Now administrative facilities. So there's no request at this time, and so we said there is no current impact fee request for this project, and you not foresee a potential request until fiscal year 2024, being the earliest due to total impact fee collection of other funding sources. So those are the projects and what we're recommending as far as funding. I will continue on. Pursuant to West Virginia State Code, Chapter 7, Article 20, Section 6, counties which have enabled impact fees must maintain this capital improvement plan, and only the ones listed on this CIP are eligible for funding by impact fees, either in whole or in part. The requirement for a yearly impact fee capital program capital improvement plan and the identification of impact fee fundable projects outlined in Jefferson County Impact Fee Procedures Ordinance 2003-1, Section 3C. Any subsequent changes to the approved capital improvement plan shall be approved by county commission. So if you approve this, or you approve it with changes, that's how the impact fees have to be spent in the next fiscal year, unless we come back to you with requests to changes. You don't have to worry about us or any entity being allowed to spend anything different from what's here. There are two important decision points made when considering each project. The first one is, does the project represent an expansion of an acknowledged capital category? If the answer is no, then the project's ineligible for funding using the impact fees. If the answer is yes, then the project is ineligible. If the answer is yes, then the project is eligible. Then the question becomes, is it fully or partially fundable? And if the answer is, if the project's totally due to new growth, then it's fully impact fee fundable. And if it's only partially due to new growth, then it's only partially fundable. An example would go that way, where you bought the prosecutor's office building. So you moved everybody over there. So that's existing. But you had space in there to add additional prosecutors and grow as the county grows. And they determined in the study what portion of that could go to new growth. They valued it. And so that part is partially fundable by impact fees or in this case you don't cost recovery. You pay for it upfront. You go and get your money back. In cases where a project may be funded using impact fees, the impact fee program specialist examines the current cash flow analysis to determine how much you collected fees is attributed to the relevant capitals category. The cash flow analysis also tracks fee dispersment over time. So it's a useful tool for providing guidance on overall spending trends. The following five tables constitute the official cash flow analysis for each of the five impact fee categories. The revenue and expenditures date are cumulative from the beginning of the respective fee collection start date through January 1, 2022. The projected balance runs to July 1, 2022, which is the beginning of the FY 23 fiscal year. For the purpose projecting cash flow analysis from January. For, for the purpose projecting the cash flow analysis from January 2021 through June 30th, 2021, that should be 22. More correct, that should be. It was assumed that the county's growth rate for the same period in 2022 would be constant and equal to the same period as last time. So essentially we assume 206 single-family units will come in in that six months, 40 townhouses and one duplex. There were five commercial developments, but we're collecting, they collected $25 in fees off them. So we, that's insignificant and we ignore it. So we go to the cash flow analysis projection tables and we actually have a spreadsheet that's probably well over 15 tabs long, attracts everything from revenue to date to expenditures to date to interest approved to date and all that. And we go through and then we, based on the study, what, what percent of each dollar that comes in should go to each capital category? We break that all down into these tables here. So where you end up is that we're saying on July 1, 2022, the beginning of fiscal year, it's at the bottom of the, of the table for the schools. The projected amount that we see that they'll have in our account will be 8,168,376 dollars. And I'll just note when we're talking about in these capital allocations in the blue or purple boxes there, 29.2% would go to elementary schools and land, 67.2% to middle schools and high schools and land, and 3% would go to administrative offices and maintenance shop, et cetera. And that's what happens is that you're talking level of service and the study recalculates and resets it. It's redetermining how much of every dollar should go to what, to maintain the same level of service. So for law enforcement, we're projecting they'll have 374,668 dollars in their account. For Parks and Recreation, we're projecting they'll have 845,779 dollars in their account. And for Emergency Services, they'll have 54,265 dollars in their account. And for Administrative Facilities, we're projecting there will be $14,000 in that account. Then the rest of the stuff that's in the CIP is all the forms and information that's submitted to Michelle with their requests and justifications. That's in the appendix there as the backup. So that brings us to the motion, which is we're asking you to approve the capital improvement plan as presented or you think it needs amended. Tell us what the amendment needs to be adopted that way.
The only question I have within the department's request is this capital. Is your, do we have any oversight of what they're requesting, what they want to spend the money on at all?
Yes. For example, Parks and Rec submits a request to say, say buy land and they want $200,000. We'll look and see in that capital category how much money is in their account. And then she breaks it down into that, in that capital category. If they've only got 100,000, we tell them, you've only got 100,000. So either you don't buy land or you buy less land than equals 100,000, or you find other money. And we, we manage it like that. And you can't take under impact fees and the way it works, you can't take money from land and spend it on equipment. What you do is because you're failing to maintain the, the same level of service for the people that are paying those fees, you open yourself up to a legal challenge that they did not get what they paid for. And that does happen, according to the consultant across the country, there's, there's case law on that where people paid for one thing, thinking they were going to get more parkland and found out the money was spent on a new swimming pool and they sued to get their money back because they didn't get what they thought they were getting. So in answer to your question, yes, we monitor all that.
Well, the question I do have is for the Parks and Rec, they have requests for Septic Upgrade. Do you know the, the details of that? Because there is a name across the street at the Job Corps. It would be nice to sit and keep, it'd be nice to put lines to it and connect it to the Job Corps, if that's possible.
Yeah, I mean, we don't get into review on like the engineering and the details of this stuff. But I can email Jennifer and, and let her know that the county commission expressed a concern that, were there any other options to that? What would that?
Yeah, yeah, because I think part of her, when she came in, we were talking about art money. We were, she was requesting a million dollars to do that. And I don't know, this Septic, maybe the Septic upgrade is for that project. I don't know. It'd be, instead of continuing to upgrade the Septes, that's the way to hook into the public sewer there. And there is a, there's a force pain there at Job Corps across the street.
I'll let her know that, that you were wondering if that was another option.
Sure.
He's spending that money.
And maybe it's come up with that other option. It's never got translated to the big work.
Yeah, that's what I was, that's kind of what I was thinking. Should have, should have continued to hook in the sewer Septic, or Septic, hook into the sewer and we're done.
I'll find out.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And I will, I'll email all of you if that's what you want, what I find out.
That'd be great. Okay.
I have a question. There's no page number. But it's just before D fighter one. EMS vehicles and equipment. And it says capital category overspent.
Yeah.
What, when, how does that happen?
Here's what transpired.
Okay.
Years back, impact fees got moved into my department. I'd never done impact fees. There's no class you can take on impact fees or anything like that. And we had all the records. There were things by the other director that was done, that was done by him in the work setting, spreadsheets and things that Michelle had never seen. And so we, we spent a long time trying to study these spreadsheets and decipher what was going on. And as these requests came in, for example, on Parks and Rec Equipment.
Yeah.
And being overspent.
Right, that was the other one, yeah.
Is that as they were requesting money for equipment in that capital category, we were approving requisitions to pay it. But when we finally sorted everything out after several years and talked to the consultant and said, it's our understanding that this is the way this works. He says that's exactly the way it works. And so we looked and said, uh-oh, we allow more money to go out in certain capital categories than, than they had.
Correct.
So they're overspent. So they, so they basically spent money in advance. Now you wait till impact fees come in. And if it's three cents off every dollar, it goes into that capital category to build it back up to zero someday. And then they start getting deposits and they can spend again. So we didn't know how it worked.
Right, right.
And that's how it happened and we're catching the backup.
Well, and, and the point is that it's not just, you know, pot of money for anything within that department. It's proportioned out to the capital expenses of, whether there's vehicles, buildings, land, all that kind of stuff.
Same thing happened with law enforcement, with sheriff's vehicles.
Yeah.
You're getting vehicle after vehicle every year.
Right.
It got overspent. So now he can't utilize impact fees on vehicles until it catches back up.
Yeah.
And that's just the way it is. It'll balance out someday.
Yeah.
Yes, it was just, it was a mistake on my part because I didn't know how it worked. I didn't know the math. But we figured it out. We talked to the consultant, got on those, on another occasion, explained to him how we were managing it and everything. And he said, you are the gold standard for how this is to be managed. Others do it loosely and open themselves up to challenges in court. So we, we know where we are. I think we have a really good handle on it now.
Well, I have one more question with the Regional Support Center. What is, what is the Regional Support Center of Board of Education? You know, is that a? I'm just curious what it was. I know.
I'll just tell you what I know from the newspaper.
Okay.
I think it's the building that they were proposing for when they wanted to eminent domain, the Rock Hill site. I think it's a facility that's for special needs kids, I think.
I think you're right. I think, I think so.
And they were proposing a newspaper that would serve like Morgan Berkeley and Jersey Counties. That they were going to try to get some funding from the other school boards in those counties as part of the construction cost for this.
I see.
And that, you know, that's all I.
Yes, they did not submit a CIP form two, which gives us a description.
Would you like me to email them and ask them?
I'll just, no, I think I.
I think, yeah, I'd be interested in them.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think they need 150 acres to put that building on it. From the legal eminent domain case that they were trying to pull, but maybe they can find some, maybe 20 acres. I don't know.
I stay out of that.
I know you do. I know. I'm not putting you on the spot.
But what we email and ask is if you just provide more detail on what, what that project entails.
Sure.
All right.
All right. So I'll move to approve the FY 2023 capital improvement plan for the office of impact fees as presented. So moving secondly, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all is apparent to I. Post.
Thank you. We'll have to put up with this again until another year.
Unless we have any modification.
All right, we're going to take a five-minute break. We'll be back at 11:30. All right, we're going to take a five minute break. We'll be back at 11:30.
Yeah.
Yeah. Got it. Thank you. Um, so we're going to move back because we jumped ahead to get to Roger. Um, Mr. Danny, let's-
Oh, can you hear me? And can my phone be up under the mask? Well, thank you for your time. And as you know, you all have told us earlier that the responsibility for designated use of the courthouse rests with Judge Hammer. Judge Hammer has given his permission and is eager to have the stage play about the centennial of the Bill Lizard trial performed in the courthouse. However, he suggested that we get in touch with the commission to make sure that we're all on the same page about the security of the building to when we have rehearsals there. And the first time I ever did the annual, the custodian opened the door up. And when we left, they closed it up. Nobody worried about it, but unfortunately things have changed and not for the better. Because now we have to maintain security and we understand that. So the issue is that Judge Hammer's given his okay for the rehearsals, but he wanted you all to know that we need to bail us during the rehearsal time, which will start about the 21st of February and run until the end of the play on the 24th of April. So that means bailiff's present during that period from 7:00 PM in the evening to 9:00 PM in the evening. And also to ask permission of the commission to use this room on Sunday, 6th February from, uh, see, uh, say, I believe 6:00, they asked for 6:00 PM. Len has asked for 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM on Sunday and 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM on Monday, February 7th for auditions for the show. And finally, to ask if the commission has any interest in being part of the activities associated with the centennial observance. And the reason for bringing that up is there is considerable interest in the southern part of the state. I understand it's going to be several charter bus caravans coming from Lincoln, Mingo, Logan, and Wyoming counties as well as the informed with what they're calling the redneck auto caravan. And that's their phrase, not mine. And of course, redneck is not, is not such a pejorative to them as it is in other parts of the country. But not to go into that. And anyway, uh, that was what we wanted to touch bases with you about. We, I will know by the end of the day, we will probably have a celebrity for the events in April from radio 77 WABC in New York, because we're talking with them about jointly celebrating our centennial with their centennial. Because 1922 was part of their first year as a broadcasting radio station. And they're very interested in dovetailing with this because of the big event of 700 people being charged with treason. And some of you remember Lawrence Lloyd, the weatherman here. Well, in a nutshell, Lawrence told me about a reporter who used to come to him at the Hotel Thomas Jefferson to have a script. Said about 4:30 every afternoon during the trial sent to a radio station in New York. And he gave letters to WJZ. That didn't mean anything to me at the time. I couldn't work it into the script. But then, last October, when the air personnel, because of Brucey Morrow, mentioned that October 21st, 1921 was the first day that they went on the air as WJZ, well, that rang the bell. So I contacted Red Apple Media that owns what's now WABC. And they are interested in jointly celebrating their centennial and ours. So I'll know more by the end of the day what that's going to amount to. Plus, we're working with the town, uh, that is the retail merchants association, with the Jefferson County Convention and Visitors Bureau through Laura Storm's office, Devin McClure through the Ranson Convention and Visitors Bureau. We have a director for the show and we're getting ready to cast. So those were the three questions I wanted to pose to you, based at Judge Hammer's insistence.
I have a question. So I know you said, so on the seventh, you were saying what time for rehearsal?
Okay, the, let's see, the seventh will be from seven to nine.
In the evening?
In the evening.
So we just moved that budget.
We just moved the budget session there.
To that. So they're-
Oh, you did. Okay, you won't be available that night.
This won't be available that night because we just moved our budget session.
Okay, well, okay, we have Sunday and sixth.
I see.
Well, doesn't that require staff to come and unlock the door for them?
Yeah.
That's what I'm trying to figure out. I think we really need to get a calendar of what times you want. And, and you said, you know, February 21st and 24th for the courtroom. Well, that's two months. How much is that rehearsal and how much of that-
That is all rehearsal. It's all rehearsal and the four performances.
Five days, seven days a week?
Uh, no, it won't be set rehearsal. We will be rehearsing on weekends.
Well, we, I think we really need a calendar with those times outlined. So bailiff's support if we decide to fund it. We know what time-
Well, I could have that for you by the end of the day.
Yeah, I was going to your point with bailiff support. Have you, have you talked to, uh, the sheriff's office on the scheduling and the availability of-
And I'll be talking to Judge Hammer this afternoon and I'll have, and I'll have him work it out. If that's okay.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I just think we're asking for some more detail.
Yeah.
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 You could have this information by the end of the day. I, I didn't know to bring it with me or I wouldn't.
And the 21st is a holiday, so it'll be close that day anyway. Yeah.
Uh, yeah, the 21st is President's Day. But, but at any rate, that's, and that was the approximate starting for the rehearsals. But Len has asked for 10 weeks to rehearse.
That'll be an impactful of the budgets. Yeah. The sheriff's budget? Yes.
That was going to be my next question. Does this group, are they, we have to have a bail there that are, are they willing to pay for the, the fees associated with us?
We have to know what fee is going to fortunately charge. Again, we, if, if it's, if it's too, if it's too much, then we'll just drop the whole thing.
Okay.
Well, and, and for the performances, you might need more than one bail. I mean, I, I don't know. Talking about crowds, you know, I just-
Yeah.
We'll have to figure that out.
Yeah, no, we need it. I don't know. We'll have to figure out how much it'll, it's going to cost. We'll need a schedule. So we can put, give it to the sheriff so he can figure out what it's going to cost to, to have security there. And then, and the evenings, and then we'll have to go from there and try to have a, put a budget together for that.
Yeah.
Because after all, a centennial of any kind of event only occurs once. And if, if this, if this comes too large and high, then we won't be able to do it.
Sure, I understand.
Well, yeah.
I'm sure.
You've got to know, everybody's got to know going forward, so.
Yeah. Yeah, because it, it was, it was during the day. We had extra bails. We're asking them to come in at the evenings to work. Uh, the sheriff will, and, and we'll know that that's something we'll have to run by the sheriff to make sure it's okay as well, too. And we could actually, there's, there's bails that want to work that in the evening to do that.
We've got to make sure we've got the money.
Yeah, and we have to make sure the money's there. So, yeah, we just can't, this, this is a budgetary item as well as you using. So it's, we got to figure it out and figure out what we can. I think, uh, it's certainly going to cost money. It's going to cost somebody money. How about that?
But my, my sentiment is, uh, I think it's a good idea, but we should need more information.
Yeah.
So we can keep it on the agenda once we get that information to action on it.
Well, I'll have the information, the best information I can supply by the end of the day. However, uh, if it means we have to have a meeting with the sheriff and meeting with Judge Hammer, apparently that's somewhat in the commission. Looks like that's what's going to have to be done to make this most expedient.
I think so.
Well, it'll have to be brought back to the commission to approve the expenditures, too. So we just need the schedule, sheriff come up with the-
And also-
Costs.
And we can't, we can't drag this out too long because that will, that will also end the project.
I should. No, I'm, 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 obviously am amenable to the project.
Right.
We just, we just can't, uh, you know, approve something with the, with a lot of unknowns, what it's going to cost. Basically, the taxpayers to cover this, or if you, showing, I don't think we should put this on, on the backs of the backs to taxpayers, but maybe the organization that wants to do it can pay the, the bail, uh, wages to, to offset, so.
And of course, I can appreciate that, but as I, as you recall, last fall, when this was brought up, uh, you, and you referred us to Judge Hammer to take care of all this. No one told us the, these mechanisms that have to come into play. Uh, we were just brushed off, uh, as though we were supposed to just go away and be quiet. So if this had been taken care of that four months ago, we'd have been better off.
Thank you.
All right, uh, we can move to agenda. Item number 10.
Hi, greetings. I am under assumption that you can hear me.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay, very good. Thank you. Good morning. I just appear before you to request appointments of two full-time public safety dispatchers that have gone through our, uh, hiring process and are in front of you for, um, approval. The two individuals that I have requested are two individuals that are entry-level dispatchers with no experience, uh, and, um, come to us with, uh, one of them comes to us with experience, uh, working at the Shepherd University Police Department while she was going to school to complete her BA in sociology. The, uh, uh, both candidates are, uh, offered salaries commensurate to their level with, uh, the no experienced, uh, complete entry level, uh, set at, uh, $18 and, uh, $14.93 an hour with, uh, uh, the second one, uh, having the four-year degree at $19.0567 an hour. Um, I give you the hourly wage because the yearly wage, uh, does not, uh, show its full accuracy in their, in their yearly because of the built-in 7/12 schedule, uh, that we have that builds in overtime for it. So, um, I am requesting, um, that you approve both of these individuals. They would be slated to start February 28th.
Hey, what was your names again?
Gabriel Dugan. They're right there.
Gabrielle Dugan and Kaylee Osborne.
I'll, I'll move that, uh,
Sorry.
We employ two full-time public safety dispatchers, Gabrielle Dugan, at $18.1493 per hour. And Kelly Osborne, um, starting salary at 19.0567 per hour with an effective date of, of February 28th.
Second. So been moved and seconded. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all is a fair debate. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
That's land, pound of people.
Yeah.
Hard to find in these days.
Next, I have a name. Anything we can do in open session?
Um, I had my item number six that we've already done in open session. Beyond that, um, as far as, uh, goes today, my item number two, I need to discuss some issues with the commission regarding, uh, the solar text amendment and the conference plan and the, uh, current litigation that is happening over those matters. So I recommend that we would go into executive session with the purpose of receiving the advice on, um, the issues in my number two.
I may do that. We go into second session for legal advice to, uh, Mr. Nathan Cochran, uh, subside of section two. Do discuss and receive legal opinions or legal issues regarding the text amendment.
Second, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all is a fair debate. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're in second session.
Excellent.
Unless you want to let it up there.
Oh, yeah.
Roger.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah.
I'll send any other-
I move we come out of executive session.
Second.
It's been moving segment, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all those who say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Mr. Chair, yes. Uh, if there's no objection, we return.
Thank you.
I think so. Um. Yeah. Give it. Wait. Uh. I don't. Yeah. Let me see.
We're having a debate. We're ready to turn. Oh, I'm not. For sure.